Good evening. I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Ms. Harris, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Ms. Voce.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman is not with us. Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Isart.
Here.
Ms. Rodney.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Voce. Before, first item on the agenda is a presentation, and we're very pleased tonight to have with us Ms. Darlene Cusanza from the Crime Stoppers Initiative. Good evening, and please come to the podium. Thank you.
And just to preface this for a moment, Ms. Cusanza and I have known each other for many years and have had many conversations and meetings in the past. And we're just very happy that this year we have formed a partnership with Crime Stoppers. And she's here tonight to just give you a brief overview of how that's going to work and how it will look within our school settings.
Thank you very much. And I am very excited to be here because I just love St. Bernard. Y'all do a great job. And Sheriff Pullman does a great job. And of course, Doris has been one of my favorite educators. I've really watched from afar and been very impressed of how she's handled the challenges through all the different storms and bringing everybody back with the school system. So, great work. But regrettably, we've seen a little bit of a change in what's been going on in our schools across the nation, and certainly in Louisiana, in regards to students who are experiencing things that maybe I never got to head to experience, particularly with extreme bullying, cyberbullying, but just concerns about school shootings, you know, nationwide they're hearing this. And it really brings to mind the fact that if you give them an opportunity to speak and do it in a way that they feel secure, that's what this anonymous reporting is all about. It's giving them a voice. And it's teaching them a couple of things. It's teaching them that they can be empowered over situations, particularly over threats of self-harm from their friends when they're seeing this. It's certainly teaching them to be the hero when they're speaking up against bullying. And certainly when they're talking about other issues of much more adult nature, such as abusive situations that they might be in with a boyfriend, or drugs coming on campus, and certainly school shootings. I mean, this is an opportunity for them to say, "I can be part of the solution." So, we work with you. Everything is for you, for the schools. We're just the, you know, the vessel. We take all the information, and it's an app. It's not really a hotline anymore, though we do have a phone number, and we do answer that number, old-school. But we all new kids don't really use phones anymore for us, other than social media, right? They want to talk to you through an app. So, everything comes through the app or our website, which saveschoolsLouisiana, and everything comes to you. So, the school system really has control of all the information. They take that information, they do what they need to do with it investigative-wise, and then they just report back to us that the information was closed. What the system allows you to do with that information on the closure is run reports, do intervention reports, and just kind of look at a longitudinal study of the type of threats that you're seeing coming in or the concerns that students are talking about. Extremely valuable for you to be able to have that information. We also give parents the opportunity to give information through the hotline or through the tip process. And they do. And many of you know the parents, and you're able to kind of combine that information with maybe you've already heard, but it gives them a feeling of that it's another layer of being able to say what they're concerned about. We're never going to ask you about the investigative process. We're just going to ask you the closure. So, it's a disposition. And we do that so that we can have that report to be able to show that all tips were answered. This is a turnkey package, so we're giving you everything you need to be successful. You know, we're giving you the software. We're uploading all of the team in the software. We are vetting all the information. Again, it's not just an app. We're an answering service. And I think that's where people get confused. So, we're actually getting called in the middle of the night if it's a threat. And then if it's a true first-person threat, well, I'm bringing a gun to campus. I'm calling your administrative team. And they're going to be able to react. And on that team, it includes law enforcement. So, this is multidisciplinary. It's meant to be that way so that we don't miss any students who might be suffering or threatening to hurt somebody at school. For us, we're 24/7, so a lot of the information that comes into us is after our school hours, right? They're not supposed to be using their phones. But we will be taking that call in the middle of the night, or we will be taking that call on a Saturday or Sunday. But again, unless it's an emergency threat, the information comes through an email system and a text message system, and you're able to work with that information when you need to. The life safety process for us is, again, that emergency. So, if it's a first-person threat of suicide, or if it's a weapon coming on campus, that's when we actually call our team until someone says, "Yes, I've got it," and then it's handled. Crime Stoppers has been around for a long time. I've been here 27 years. And we started this back in early 2000, and we've grown it. So, I can tell you that is when we look at best practices. I think that we are one of the best practices in how we handle that information and how we make sure kids understand that they are part of that complete process. So, our video that we're going to give you to show the kids, it's all the kids created. Our logo is little S-S's. It's kids-created. Everything, the messaging is coming from the kids. We do student groups. We'd love to have some of your students be part of that. So that as they're looking at what would make them feel comfortable, how they're receiving that message, that's what we're doing. And then last but not least, we do presentations. So, we will come in and do presentations in your school on different topics. Sometimes it just, they need to hear from an outside source, whatever that might be. And we'll come in and we'll talk about bullying. We'll talk about drugs. We'll talk about whatever the trends are, school shootings. I just did an active shooter presentation today at a private school in New Orleans. But whatever the topic is that needs to be addressed, we're going to bring that to you. And at this stage, there is no cost to any of this service. So, not only is it something that we're proud to have been able to do for many, many years, now under the new state bill, 207, it's mandated. So, it's a perfect time to be really engaging in using the program. And I'd like to open it up to any questions you might have about what we do or how we do it. And just rest assured, we're ready to go. Thanks to Ms. Voce's excellent work. So, any questions?
Thank you so much for being with us tonight. We appreciate it and for providing all this information. Do any board members have questions? Mr. Warner.
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you for your presentation. How does, can you just touch on a little bit more, be a little bit more specific about the anonymous of how that works?
Absolutely. So, Crime Stoppers, first off, I mean, our whole mantle is about anonymity. So, when someone's sending us information, we're not tracking who that, we're not asking their ID. We're not asking their IP address. We're not tracking a phone number. We're not asking them to give us anything that's going to identify them, unless it's a first-person threat of harm. If a student's going, you know, I'm talking about wanting to kill myself tonight. I've got my plan. We're going to be doing everything we can to get the information on that student, to be able to get to the parents, to get law enforcement to do a welfare check. But if a friend is sending that information, that information's coming to us anonymously unless the friend says something about their name. And that's been the premise of Crime Stoppers, because kids want to feel like they can do things and say things and not be, you know, threatened because they gave their name, particularly in bullying instances. The other instance would be an active shooter. If someone's coming to shoot the school or do some type of harm like that, terrorism, an act of terrorism, that's abusing our system. And we're going to do whatever we need to do to locate that person so that that law enforcement can interact immediately. But those are the only two examples. Other than that, it comes to us anonymously.
Thank you. And this is, to me, this is a very valuable service that your organization is providing. So, thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Long.
Yes, ma'am. I'm wondering, do you have this implemented in any other school systems?
Oh, yes. We are in active, when I say live, which means they're in the app. They've done all the work. In over 525 schools, we have another 150 that's onboarding. So, we branched statewide in 2020, right for COVID. So, we're in 44 parishes now. So, yes.
And you did say the people can still remain anonymous.
Yes.
Did I understand that correct?
Yes, sir. They can.
Okay. And have you encountered any problems? I know, I know the tips or the calls or the tips that come in are monitored and vetted. But have you encountered any problems coming from students?
Right. If there's something that's obviously a spamming of the system or it's, you know, not credible information, you can pretty much tell that. If it's something that's very, you know, there's nothing that you can investigate, we're going to mark that as spam. The only thing that we've had, and actually we had two instances last year, and this was, we were not the only source that were identified. Multiple people were identified, were two schools that they were threatening to come shoot up the school. But it was actually individuals from, I want to say Colorado, out of state. And they kept picking on the Kinder Discovery School. That was the closest one. There was another one up in, I think, Rapids or up north. And in that situation, we actually could capture the IP address. We gave that to law enforcement, and they were able to see that that was part of a thread of multiple attempts of, you know, spamming the system, I guess. It's called swatting. But yes, that's the only two things. And it's not a problem for the system, but it just shows that people are paying attention to the fact that this mechanism is here.
I've always admired Crime Stoppers. I thought it was a great program, especially when people can remain anonymous. Because many people out there, they may see crimes, but they don't want to get involved. And if they can remain anonymous, and I think in some cases, they have monetary rewards, correct?
Yes, we always did that. And as an adult program, we give out rewards. With the school program, when statewide, there wasn't any funding for rewards. So, we don't give rewards out for the school program. But if for some reason this program became just a part of my 10 parishes again, like it was originally, we did do rewards, and we would do some type of encouragement. I can tell you historically with the kids, with their rewards, it was never 100% picking up the reward money. It was usually about 50% of the kids picking up the reward money. So, I like to think that the kids are just doing it for the right reasons, right?
Well, it's, it sounds like a fantastic program. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments at this time? Ms. Jackson?
So, as a mom of a middle school and high school student, I know how important anonymity is and how reluctant they are to share information, even with me as their parent. So, this is one of the safety initiatives that I was most excited about that we introduced in the last year. When will the students get information about the app and, you know, downloading it? When do we plan on going live?
Very soon.
Very soon. We're setting up presentations because we want, go in and talk with the students first. Explain the program. Explain what needs to be done. And parent meetings as well, they're going to be able to be there, and parents will have it explained to them. So, it's going to be within the first month that we're going to be doing this.
Yeah, I do want to touch on, and congratulations on two children, because you know firsthand that they, and you said it, and that's why this is so important. When these kids are expressing concerns, whether it's self-harm or whatever, they're not telling the adults, you know, 80% of the time, they're telling their friends. And what we do, that's different. You know, there's the suicide hotlines and the 988, I think, number. And we tell kids, if it's an emergency, call, you know, if it's really an emergency, call 911. Call the suicide hotline. But they're not taking calls from friends. We're taking calls and we're getting the threads and the messaging that the friends are receiving. And the first thing that I do when I see this is I'm like, "You're a hero for stepping up because you just, you know, helped your friend, perhaps saved their life." And kids, they have so much, you know, regret. Do I need to, should I speak up? Should I not speak up? I mean, they're going back and forth, you know? Am I snitching on my friend if I? No, they need to know that they're, you know, they really are honoring their friend by protecting them. So, you know, it's incredible to see what kids can do if they're given that opportunity. Sorry. Ms. Harris?
Is that it, Ms. Jackson?
That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
So, I'm not sure if it's a question for you or for the superintendent, but I'm thinking about the policies that are going into place that require immediate calls to law enforcement if you believe that there's a threat. And I'm also thinking about as a mandatory reporter, because I know adults can use it. How do we kind of safeguard against adults, not so much students, but adults using this as a reporting mechanism when they should be using another reporter? They should be calling 911, or they should be calling DCFS? What, is there training? Is there something within the app that said, like, that tells someone that it should be like an immediate call to 911 or?
None of it's abuse per se. I mean, it talks about any emergency calls. We're not the suicide hotline. If it's an emergency call, 911. Now, your team is an interdisciplinary team. It has to have a law enforcement component to be able to start this program. So, they're going to be getting the information, just as Ms. Voce does. They're going to be, that member is going to also see that information. So, as for mandatory reporters, y'all are going to have the tools there to be able to do that. But certainly on our end, technically, we're not a mandatory reporter, but I can guarantee you that we take that role as part of our own, too.
Right. We, you know, if it's an imminent threat, there's a district team, a central district team. I'm on it. Ms. Lichardi is going to be heading that. We have Lieutenant Canepa on that team as well, and a social worker on the team. And anything that is of an emergency nature 24/7 that gets reported to Crime Stoppers immediately comes to this team, of which law enforcement is a part of it. So, it'll be reported immediately. If it is something of a lesser status and it happens in the evening, then that report will come to us the next morning for investigation. But if it is an imminent threat or something that is an emergency situation, we will be contacted if it's 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM. We will get that information.
Any other questions at this time? Again, we want to thank you again for coming tonight, for your presentation, and also for including St. Bernard Parish in this initiative. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. We're glad to be here. And if there's anything else that you need to know, you'll know how to reach me.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Mrs. White, an education item.
Thank you. Yes, on 3.1, we have consideration of St. Bernard Parish Public Schools 2023-24 Pupil Progression Plan by Ms. Leanne Holton. Thank you.
Good evening. In front of you, you have a draft copy of the 2023-24 Pupil Progression Plan. It's not finalized until I come to the next board meeting after this, and then I'm going to send it to the state after that. I'm here for a couple of reasons. Every year, and I want to explain to everyone who has never seen this before, who doesn't know what the pupil progression plan is, the state gives us guidelines for students to be progressed. If you look at this draft document, anything in blue is what the parish does to support whatever they're telling us to do in black. Everything in black is from the state. And they have a lot of guidelines for K1, 2, mostly for 3 and 4. And then they moved on to a high school, like what they want to know about our alternative programs. All that's in this pupil progression plan, okay? So, you'll go through it, and you'll see in blue the things that we added that the school board does in addition to the things that the state is telling us to do. So, I wanted to get that clear before I went on. Last year, I came before you with the 4th grade and 3rd grade literacy initiative that they have to come for 30 hours in the summer. And we did an addendum to the pupil progression plan. We don't need an addendum anymore because it's in here, okay? So, it's part of the pupil progression plan this year, so that is set in stone right now. Also included, we have the 4th grade AIAPs for students who, we're still evaluating that right now. Students who got below basic on two of the four core areas. We have to do an academic plan for them. All that's included in here, okay? What I'm here for today is to tell you about the one change that we want to make in this pupil progression plan. Everything else is remaining the same that it was in the past. Before I start, I want to tell you that I am not, or nobody in this school system is in favor of retaining kids over and over again. That's something we just frown upon. However, the change we want to make in the pupil progression plan is on page 6. You turn to page 6, okay? And this says, "Promotion of students in kindergarten in grades 1, 2, 5, 6, and 7," because that promotional status is different from 3, 4, and 8. Because 3 and 4, we're looking at their literacy plans. They have to come to summer school in order to be placed in the next grade level. And 8th grade, they also have the, 7th, 8th grade, they have the LEAP test that they take. Okay. So, let's look at this one change that we are trying to make, but of course, we want to come before you, okay? In grades 1, 2, 5, 6, and 7, the promotional policy is, and I'm going to read it to you, elementary students in grades 1, 2, and 5 who fail ELA in math, and middle school students in grades 6 and 7 who failed three major course subjects shall be retained. That's been there forever. Now, this is the part that's changing, right here. And we did have a meeting with interested parties about this. I brought it up to all the people, the administrators. We also had a meeting with a couple of parents and teachers and principals, and everybody was in agreement with this. This is the change. In addition, with the new emphasis on literacy, after examination of all relevant ELA data, elementary students in grade 1 who fail only ELA may be retained as determined by the school administration, which means that they're going to look at all the data on this child, and if they feel they only failed reading and didn't fail reading and math, we're going to have the option to retain those kids to try to catch them early so that when they get to 3rd grade and when they get the new initiative in 3rd grade, they'll be able to pass 3rd grade. Now, again, special ed students, students who have all kind of other issues, that's all going to be handled individually. It's not going to be like a blanket, "Okay, you failed ELA and you fail." It's going to be determined by a meeting at the school or a meeting with the IEP team. But we feel that 1st grade is where you need to catch these kids if they can't read. So, we feel like now we'd like to change this policy that it, 1st grade only, if they fail only ELA, we have the opportunity to retain them. In the past, we used to ask parents, we'd get the parents in, and some of the parents would agree to keep their kids back because they didn't want them to go on if they had an F in reading. But a couple of the times, we want, a couple of times, we wanted to fail, not fail, but retain the kids in 1st grade. But our pupil progression policy said they had to fail reading and math. So, some of the parents did not want their children to go on. And they did struggle when they got to 2nd grade. I can tell you that. But this is the only change that we want to make in the policy. But again, any special ed, any other extenuating circumstances, or any student who thinks just reading, it will be handled on an individual basis. Because we want to look at all the data to make sure that everything was done to the best of our ability to get that child what he needed in 1st grade. Now, we also have the luxury, not luxury, but the lovely thing of having our interventionists this year. So, we're hoping that that also helps that we don't have that many students who would be retained in 1st grade. But this is what I'm here for, just to tell you about the new change, or the change we want to make. All right? I'm ready for questions.
Do you have any questions on the board? Melanie?
You may not have this information now, but at the board meeting, would you be able to tell us, if this was in place last year, how many students would have been impacted by the change?
I don't have it on the top of my head. It probably would have been about 20 students, maybe 25 across the parish. But, you know, the whole thing, I don't, I mean, don't quote me on that because it's like, I try to keep things in my head, but my head's getting a little jumbled up as I get older, okay? But, you know, basically, I don't want you to think we are here to retain kids. That's not our, that's not what we want. We want the best for the kids. And if, you know, this is my whole stance on retention. Sometimes it works. Sometimes it doesn't, you know? And for some kids, they're retained in a grade, and in the next grade, they flourish. Or they make the honor roll that second year, you know, where they feel like they're successful. But sometimes it doesn't work, and that's when the child moves into 504, and then I, you know, does all the paperwork that we need to get the help that he needs. Okay? I don't really have that information, Ms. Harris, but we can get it to you. But it, I would say it was about 20 or 25 across the parish. Yeah. It's not a tremendous amount.
Thank you. Anybody else? Diana?
So, basically, Ms. Holton, the word "may," that would include the teacher team and then the principal, and also the parent?
Yes.
And with a discussion prior to retaining.
Yes, but the parent is not going to have the ultimate say-so.
Right.
The ultimate say-so is going to come from the data that we sit. And like I said, or it may be an IEP team. You know, we're not going to hold the child back if it's not going to do them any good to hold them back. And you know, all our policy states that if a child's already been retained, then that child has the opportunity to attend summer school, to go on. Now, when I'm saying that, we don't just blanketly pass kids on if they fail every year. They have to come to summer school or the summer learning program. That's the only way they can be promoted to the next grade because we feel like at least that would give them some help. You know, a few of the kids that did fail or fail 1st grade this year, they came to summer school. We took them in our summer school program. And the parents were very excited about that because they were going back to the school and had some extra skills that they learned in summer school. So, we did do that. But it's all, it's a, we put the word "may."
Right.
Because it's not like a "shall," okay?
All right. And like you said, we're not here to try to retain children. We want to see them promoted. But if they are having difficulty, that much difficulty in 1st grade, they're going to struggle throughout.
And you know, it may, it may be a good thing, Ms. Isart, but again, there's no guarantee that when they get to 2nd grade, they're going to flourish.
Right.
You know, but we're going to give it the old college try to see if we can maybe, you know, to me, the better grade, the best grade to retain a child in is 1st grade. You know, because that's when you're getting all your, the skills that you need to go on.
The foundation.
Yes, the foundation.
Okay. And so, these 1st graders, if they are retained, will they be eligible then for the summer school program?
Yes. We never turned anybody down for summer school.
Okay, good.
Never. We had, I'm going to tell you, we had a child come and just sat in the office, and I said, "I'm sorry, but you're not on the roster." He was like a 4th grader. He says, "But I like it." He says, "I want to be here." I said, "Well, come on in." So, we got, we called his mom, and we got his information, and he stayed with us, you know? So, you know, we try to make summer, the summer learning program not as competitive or stressful as, you know, you might think it is. The kids enjoy coming because they come for five hours a day, no, four and a half hours a day, I'm sorry. And they enjoy it. In fact, they were hugging us when they were leaving. They didn't want to leave. But we had two summer schools born this year in elementary. And then Mary had, I think, 3 and 4 in middle and high school. She had them everywhere. You know, so this is just what I wanted to explain. I hope I explained it well enough that, you know, it's certainly not our intent to just say, "Oh, you're saying that." No. Especially if it's a child who is really, you know, and if it's a special ed student who's already been retained, we're certainly not going to hold them back, you know?
Thank you. And on that note, I will, I will make a motion that we send this pupil progression plan to the full board, okay?
Thank you. We have.
Recommendation.
Okay. Yeah. Diana and seconded by Catherine Lemoine. Are we going to vote on that? Please cash your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, next item on the agenda are the personnel changes. We have a lengthy list. We'll give you a few minutes to choose. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. We've been busy in personnel. Yes, yes, we have. You see, we have lots of appointments since the last meeting. We don't have any retirees to speak about today.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing. Yes.
Do we have any open positions?
We have about four or five, and I'm hoping that pretty soon we'll be fully staffed.
And could you name those in case there's somebody out there?
We need some pre-K positions. We haven't opened yet for pre-K, but we're looking for some pre-K teachers. Yes. In middle school.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time? There being none. Thank you. There being none. Thank you, Ms. Pritchett. We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item is a finance committee item, and with us tonight is Mr. Fernandez. And Ms. Lee Bowman is not here tonight. Does he have the finance chair answering?
I think he'll be here in finance.
Is it?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll just say this one. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. In your package, you have the Louisiana compliance questionnaire. We're required to adopt this every year in conjunction with our audit, which will begin next month. So, it's presented, basically, it asks for some information about the school system, as well as ask regarding our compliance with applicable state laws. So, we answered in an affirmative on all these questions. We're asking the adopters so we can present it to our auditors when they come in to begin our audit.
I'll make a motion that we send to the full board a recommendation, consideration of adopting 2023 Louisiana compliance questionnaire.
There's a motion on the floor for Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Discussion on the motion, or any questions at this time. There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Next item is executive, Ms. Warner.
Thank you, Mrs. Dysart. 6.1 is consideration of adopting revisions of school board policy, BCBI, remote participation in school board meetings by public individuals with disabilities. How are you?
I'm doing well. My name, for those of you who don't know, is Tony Morales. I am the new coordinator of child welfare and special projects. So, I do have some policy, either updates or new policies to bring forth to you all.
So, you the keeper of the policy now?
I am as well, yes, sir. The first one, as you said, is BCBI, which is remote participation in school board meetings by public individuals with disabilities. 6.1 and 6.2 both come from Act 393, and they are both updates, but we'll cover them one by one. The first one, it says, "In accordance with the revisions made in Act 393, each public body with such capacity must allow a member of the public with a disability recognized by the Americans with Disabilities Act, or his or her designated caregiver, to participate in meetings via teleconference or video conference. A public person who represents such participation must certify that they meet the definition of a person with a disability recognized under the Americans with Disabilities Act when they submit prior to public meetings they request to participate." So, that's the first act that I'm bringing forward, and again, it's an updated Act 393.
Okay, we're going to take these one by one, I'm assuming. So, do we have any discussion on 6.1?
I have a question. So--
Ms. Rodney has a question.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
I have a question. So, how do, what's the procedure for someone who may identify as disabled to get recognized, to ask a question, like, are we using Zoom? No, how? How the teleconference?
Yeah, we'll have a laptop computer set up. They'll let us know 24 hours in advance that they would like to ask a question or bring a question toward the board, and we will recognize them via teleconference, via Zoom, or meets, Microsoft meets.
Ms. Jackson?
So, just so we're all clear, in blue is the change--
Correct. Yeah, I provided all of you, yes, ma'am, provided all of you with the old policy and the updated policy. The, on top will be the new policy with the highlights in blue for every policy that we're updating. The last couple that we're doing are new policies, which there will be no, no old policy, because it's new policy. But yes, everything that is updated is in blue.
Okay. Mrs. Dysart?
And also, each of these updates are according to law--
Yes, ma'am.
Louisiana law that was passed through, this past legislative, correct?
Some, one of them was an optional thing that is turning into something that could be mandatory, but yes, all of them, with the exception of that one, were passed in this past legislative session, which was 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? I have a question. So, every, every public board, local school boards, councils, has to do this. Does the state legislature have to do this?
That I do not know the answer to, but I can find out for you.
I don't think they do.
I don't think they do.
I did read something where it said about emergency, like disasters, it would affect that level as well, but that is the only thing I read that would apply to them. But I'm sure there's more out there that I have not read.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on 6.1?
I'll submerge.
I have approval from Ms. Dysart. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, can't--
Second.
Who, who's second?
Second.
Oh, okay, I see, I'm sorry. Ms. Rodney's second. All in favor? Vote your machine.
Motion passes ten zero.
All right, 6.2 is BCAD, which is remote participation in the school board meetings by members with disabilities. So, this would include our school board members. So, in Act 38393, a school board member who has a disability recognized by the Americans with Disabilities Act shall be allowed to participate and vote in a meeting via electronic means. A board member who represents such participation must certify that they meet the definition as well, and they would have to submit a request prior to the meeting. So, basically, same exact thing, we would set up if, if any of you so choose, and anyone in the future so choose to meet via teleconference. We could have that set up if you identify under the Americans with Disabilities Act. That would be for board members. So, it's included in the same act, but the first was for general public, and then that recognizes board members.
Mrs. Harris?
I just thought of something. So, if, if it's a member of the public who wanted to comment, they have to let us know 24 hours in advance.
Yes, ma'am.
So, how far in advance do we have to post the agenda for them to know what's on the agenda, for them to let us know 24 hours in advance? That would require us to have a posting time in advance of the 24 hours, so that the public would know what is on the agenda, so they could let us know 24 hours in advance, right?
There's been no change on the posting of the agenda in terms of the revised statutes.
So, how do they know what's on the agenda, in which to make a request 24 hours in advance, if the agenda's not available until then?
Well, if they call us and we can do it, we will do it. We have it available, if anyone calls in a reasonable time.
No, I understand. I'm just wondering if, like, maybe we should, I mean, I don't know. I don't want us to get into a point where somebody is saying that we have a policy that is there to meet the letter of the law, but doesn't actually provide what the law is intending. So, I'm wondering if it is, I don't know, 20 hours in advance, or 20, like, I don't know, it just seems like it's a catch-22, if you don't post the agenda to 24 hours in advance. But I also have to let you know, I'm a person with disabilities, and I have to let you know within 24 hours in advance that I may not have enough time to know what's on the agenda, in which to then make you alerted to the fact that I'm interested in, you know, participating in the meeting.
I understand what you're saying. If anybody calls us in a reasonable amount of time, now, if you call us before, an hour before the meeting starts, it's going to be difficult to set it up. If you call us the evening before or the morning of, we'll be able to accommodate them. The purpose is to try to accommodate the intent of the law. So, at that point, we will try to post as soon as we can, and we'll take any reasonable request. So, we will try to make it work. And if there is a situation where it does not, then we'll come back and take a look at that.
Okay.
Any other questions on 6.2?
I'll make a motion that we send it to the full board.
Motion by Mrs. Lemoyne, a second by Mrs. White. All in favor? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
6.3 is school and student safety. It is updated part of Act 164, and the act says that they changed the School and Safety Act, the School and Safety, excuse me, the School and Student Safety Policy has been revised to include a new statutory definition for what it means to be risk is imminent, as well as to reflect changes to the reporting requirements. Again, all of those things are highlighted in blue in the section of that particular EBBB.
Any questions on 6.3, school, school boards, school safety? School and student safety?
Mr. Campbell?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Campbell, a second by Ms. Jackson. Any other discussion? All good? Ms. Diana's still looking at. All right, please cast your vote.
Motion passes. There will be nine, four, and one against.
I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you want to change it? Go ahead. So, it'd be ten zero. Motion passes ten zero.
6.4 is JB, the student attendance during remote and hybrid instruction. During remote, and again, this is an updated, it's to a revised statute 17 through 232, which is also included. It says, "During remote and hybrid instruction, students are considered to be in attendance when attendance is checked and recorded on each school day at the beginning of each class period in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 17232, and Bulletin 741, the Louisiana Handbook for School Administrators, and they have to meet one of the following requirements. The student logs into synchronous online instruction at the designated time for the course in which the student is enrolled, or evidence exists that the student assessed a planned asynchronous instructional activity." So, those are two ways that a student can get attendance for either remote or hybrid instruction.
Any questions on 6.4, student attendance during remote hybrid instruction? I'll move to recommend it to the full board. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Long, a second by Mrs. Lemoyne. So, how often are our students in hybrid instruction?
So, not, not too often, but there, you know, there's always COVID still out there. So, if that ever reared its ugly head again, we could have this in place, to where if we do have to go to remote instruction, we have a policy that addresses that.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Please vote your machine.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. 6.5 is JBD, mental health absences for students. So, mental health has been coming to the forefront, so our state legislature is trying to address that. In Act, this again is updated of Act 318. Act 318 of the 2023 Louisiana Legislature added a new provision to Louisiana Revised Statute 17226 that allows three days of excused absences related to the student's mental or behavioral health, if certification is provided in writing in accordance with the student handbook. After the second day is taken, the student must be referred to appropriate school support personnel for help with the underlying issue. There is a section on the back of that page, if you could flip it. It also says, "The act revised other related statutes to require that each school board post the National Suicide Prevention Hotline number and local suicide prevention number, if available, on its website and on student identification cards, which we do issue." So, that is, it's kind of a two-parter there. One is that students can have three unexcused, excuse me, three excused absences for mental or behavioral health, as well as us including the national and local suicide prevention hotline on our ID cards.
Very straightforward. Any questions on 6.5?
I have a question.
Mrs. Rodney?
Yeah, so, I see it, it says three days, but the second sentence says, like, the, I'm looking at it, second day, they have to have some type of documentation about why they're home.
Sure.
So, two-part question. So, the days cannot be consecutive? They have to be--
Sure.
Okay. And the second part of that question is, what is the underlying documentation? I don't have the handbook in front of me, that's why I'm asking. Like, is the documentation something from the parent, or should it be something from a physician or a mental health professional?
So, firstly, it can be concurrent days. It doesn't stipulate that it cannot be. So, it can be. And the reason being, after two days of consecutive or non, that they should meet with the school council to see what the underlying issue is, right? So, secondly, as far as our policy is concerned, we want to pass this, and then we can, you know, get into the policy nitty-gritty to make sure that we address how we're going to make sure that it is, in fact, excused.
Okay. It'll be from, like, a mental health or--
Provider.
A medical professional, if it is for these underlying reasons. Okay.
Okay. Any other, any other questions on 6.5? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept policy JBD.
Motion by Mrs. Dysart, seconded by Ms. Jackson. All in favor? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
6.6 is JGCD, which is the administration of medication, which is naloxibcom. And this is updated. Now, again, this was from Act 694 of the 2018 legislative session, and I'm going to read to you why it's just coming to the forefront now. It says, "The school nurse shall have the authority to maintain a supply of naloxone and other or other opioid antagonists, and may administer it to any student or person on school grounds in the event of an actual or perceived opioid emergency." In 2018, this was, was optional to adopt a policy regarding the use of the medication. However, with the recent increase in the misuse of fentanyl, several school boards have adopted such a policy. There is a training component, so you all know, for school employees, excluding the nurse. The nurse has already been trained in these things, or will have already been trained, at which point she can train others to administer the medication.
All right, do we have any questions on 6.6, administering of medication oxen? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Harris.
Do we have a plan for how many doses will be kept on campuses?
We have, we do not have one on every campus at all times. This training is going to be taken place by medical professionals that we're contracting with, along with our nurses. So, our nurses are trained in this, but at every school site, there will be that six hours of training for a core group of employees who will be there the whole time, and this medication will be available under lock and key on the school site. And only those people who have received that training will be allowed to administer this at all.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I think it's more from Ms. Voshin. I know you said that only a core group will be allowed the training. Are there going to be any general training for the staff in general, like, to notice what it looks like, or to know when to alert that person who may not be around, like a general trainer that's a step down--
Yes.
From what they get.
Right. So, yes, there will be, because, you know, if they're detecting students that are acting in any way that would indicate this, then we have those, it'll be instantly alerted to our administrators who will then, with our medical people. Okay.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions on 6.6? I entertain a motion.
I'll get a motion to a right, thank you.
I have a motion by Mrs. White, second by Mrs. Lemoyne. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next, we have two new policies. The first is EDCD, which is carpool and bus safety-- The first is EDCD, which is carpool and bus safety. This again is a new policy under Act 362. Act 362 of, again, the 2023 Louisiana Legislative Session added language which requires the school boards to establish policies for carpool and bus line safety for any school that includes any of the grades K to five. Although the policy includes the minimum safety guidelines from this act, school boards must develop additional administrative procedures to ensure compliance with this act. Now, we, for years, have already done all of these things, but it is currently a new policy. But we have been following these things for, for years, so.
Any questions on 6.7? Carpool and bus safety. I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez to move, and a second by Ms. Jackson. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
6. is another new policy. It is IDCJ, continuous learning. And again, this came out in the Senate Concurrent Resolution 63 of 2020. It says, "School boards are to create a continuous learning plan, which shall be posted on the school board's website. The plan shall be updated annually by June 30th and reviewed by stakeholders." The new continuous learning policy has been developed from the Louisiana Department of Education's, LDOE's, Continuous Learning Toolkit. It references the Continuous Learning Plan, which each school board must develop. BESI also requires that provisions for taking attendance for remote and hybrid instruction be included in the policy. The information added to the attendance policy is based on Bulletin 741, Louisiana Handbook for School Administrators, and Section 1104 Remote Instruction, which is similar to what we already went over for attendance purposes earlier tonight.
All right. Any questions on 6.8, continuous learning?
I'll make a motion to recommend it to the full board.
I have a motion by Ms. Malone, seconded by Ms. Jackson. So I guess there's always going to be summer school now for everybody. That's what it sounds like.
Could be, depending on how long.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
And last but not least, we have an updated version of WELL of DJD, which is for expenses. And this was taken under Board Action previously. It just says, "When traveling by personal car, the standard per molar reimbursement rate shall be the IRS-approved rate." And again, you can see what it was previously if you'd like to look in the policies.
Any discussion? Motion? Mr. Campbell?
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. White. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
That is, that is all the policy updates for tonight. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
You did a great job.
You've done a good job.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Notes. Ms. Vouchet?
It's just a reminder that at Mr. Rodriguez's request, we have placed the item on the agenda. We had contacted the officials at the Board of New Orleans. We could not be here tonight because they were out of town. And they requested at our next board meeting, so on August 22nd, they will be here to talk about timelines and proposals. Also, we, as everyone knows, opened school yesterday. It's been a smooth two days. I think a lot of the, you know, a lot of kids were really happy to be back. Some maybe not so much. But I think most of the parents were very glad that we opened yesterday. And we had really two good, good days. And the kickoff Friday at the Civic Center for all our employees went very, very well. So we're excited to begin a new school year.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchet. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion by Mr. Campbell. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposition? The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.